Welcome everyone to the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting and public hearings of Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Management analysts, would you, Bowman, would you please call? Call the role, please. Off to a great start.
All right, Chairperson Mateo.
I'm here.
Chairperson Commissioner. Commissioner Hattigan.
Here.
Commissioner Marhul.
Here.
Is here. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Is here. Commissioner Pelletier. Is here. And Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Fantastic, all right. All present.
Thank you, we have a quorum, and thanks everybody for joining us on our first ever Zoom meeting. Those of you listening on any of our platforms, we are airing tonight on YouTube, Facebook, on Xfinity Channel 6 and AT&amp;T's Channel 99. If you want to join our meeting through Zoom, you can go to the Village website, riversideil.us, go to Boards and Commissions, and Commissions, then Planning and Zoning, and on that page you will find the link to the Zoom meeting and the access ID that you will need. If you want to join us, you can send questions or comments using the chat feature, and then we will integrate that into our meeting when the time is appropriate, and everybody is welcome to join the meeting. Moving on, we have approval of two prior meetings. Do I have, first, the Planning and Zoning Commission's Special Meeting and Public Hearing Minutes of March 11, 2020. Seems like such a long time ago. Do I have a motion? Any discussion on those minutes? I sent a couple of edits to Director App earlier today. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Remember, even if you didn't attend the meeting, if you watched it and read the minutes and think that Director App did a good job on it, you can approve them.
It looks like Commissioner Pelletier was offering to make a motion.
I approve the minutes. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matthews, all in favor? You can raise your hand, or say hi. All right, thank you. Next up is the Planning and Zoning Commission's Regular Meeting and Public Hearing Minutes of February 26, 2020. Any discussion on that? I also sent some edits to Director App on those. Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to approve those minutes? As edited? Commissioner Marhul, motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Miller, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. Director App, you said we have a visitor. Is this a visitor who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay. Not hearing anything, we'll move on to, oh, is our liaison here? I don't see, Tryste Pollock. Director App, is there any board update?
No, I don't think we have a board update. They haven't taken any action on any items since, oh, the AIM special use did get approved by the Village Board, so I guess that would be the one action that has happened since your last meeting.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public hearings and recommendations. First up is PZ 20-001, Public Hearing to Consider an Application for Variation from Section, I'm sure I'm unmuted, Section 10-7-3 F2A Fence and Wall Location in Residential Districts of the Village of Riverside Zoning Ordinance to Allow 4-Foot Aluminum Fence in the Street Yard in the R1A Single Family Residence District. The petitioners are Shelley and Bart Richards, and they are here. All of the commissioners are still in attendance. All in favor? Of opening the public hearing? Raise your hand, or please say aye. I'm assuming John is raising his hand, okay. Public Notice was published in the Landmark on May 6, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. It is not in our agenda packet, but Director App has received copies of public notice as it was published in the Landmark. So how this? Oh, great, my internet connection is unstable, awesome. Can everybody still hear me? Thumbs up, if you can hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear me? You can, okay, thank you. Might have to move my computer downstairs. So this public hearing, the way it'll go is, first, we'll swear in people who are likely to give testimony. Director App will give a brief summary and hear from the petitioners. PZC can then ask questions of the petitioners and staff, and then if any questions come in from the public, Analyst Bowman will read those to us. I will read some emails that we've received by the Village, either in support or not supporting the variation request. Again, we can check to see if there are more questions that were submitted, then we'll have rebuttals, and then we'll close the public portion of the hearing, and then have our discussion. I have that right, Attorney Mars? More or less? Given the Zoom format?
You do. Yep. Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so at this time, anybody who plans on speaking, non-commissioners who plan on speaking during this public hearing, so the petitioners, the guests, staff, if you stand to be sworn in, so stand and raise your right hand. So again, if you're going to speak during the public hearing, even if you think you might, please stand and raise your right hand. Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge? Richards, if you can nod? In a sense? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Director App, that's my phone that ends in 5329 there. I'll take care of the muting here.
Oh, thank you, Sean. Oh, Sean, that's your phone, the 329?
That's right. When I'm Zooming, I use my laptop, then I call in on my phone.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Hi, Chairperson, are you ready for me to give my report?
Yes.
Thank you. As Chairperson Mateo said, the public notice for this variation was published in the paper on May 6, and the notifications were sent out to all of the neighbors within 250 feet of the property per the ordinance, and signs were posted in the yard. This property is zoned R1A, single-family residence, and they are seeking a fence variation. The zoning ordinance prohibits fences in street yards. Therefore, a variance is needed for this particular property. The way the code reads is that fences and walls shall be prohibited in street yards except where the street yard adjoins a non-residential use or along 26th Street, 31st Street, or York Road. Their proposed fence is a 4-foot aluminum fence that is going to encroach approximately 12.5 feet into the required street yard, and this is their required street yard from Lindbergh. The property does contain two parcels. The house is located on the southern parcel. The owners purchased the northern parcel after their home was built. This purchase has created a new zoning lot, which is classified as a corner lot, and a corner lot is a lot that has two intersecting street yards. In order to utilize, since this is a corner lot, the street yard is defined by where the house is located. So this case, we have two street yards, one from Arlington and one from Lindbergh. A street yard is considered the open space between the closest point of a principal structure, which includes the eaves, to any portion of the property line that abuts a street. So they have a street yard from Arlington, which comes from the front corner of their house, and then they also have a street yard from Lindbergh, which comes from those side or north corners of their house to the property line along Lindbergh. In this case, in order for them to be able to install a fence, it would need to start at the rear corner of their house, so that would be the northwest corner of their house, and extend straight back towards their rear property line, which is their west property line. Or they could move it in, so it comes off the southern corner of their garage and connects to their house, and then connects to the rear property line. That's what would be permitted by code. In order to bring that fence any closer to Lindbergh than their house currently is, requires a variance, because that is considered the street yard, and fences are not allowed to encroach into that street yard. We cannot, if we look at these properties separately, and they put the fence where they want to put it, on the northern parcel, that would not be allowed either, because we do not allow accessory structures where there is not a principal structure. So accessory structures can't precede a principal structure on a lot. So therefore, we couldn't approve it for just that lot either, if we wanted to look at them independently. The proposed fence, as located on their property, is going to be approximately 45 feet, it is its closest point, from that north property line there along Lindbergh. And if the variation is approved, they would be able to submit their building permit, and the building permit would be able to be issued for them to construct the fence. You do have, in your packet, their plat of survey, indicating where the fence will go. We have also received several comments, which were included in your packet and will be read into the record. Additionally, we did receive an additional comment this evening that we can read into the record as well. But we do have findings, a fact that need to be made, and those standards are found in the staff report as well, as we move forward with discussing the variance. And Mr. and Mrs. Richards are both here to go over a little bit more detail their project, and for you to be able to ask any questions that you might have of them.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Richards, you have a presentation or comments for us?
Well, just to reiterate what's been said already, yes, we are looking to fence in our backyard, and it is impossible just to do our backyard with the way it is set up right now. So the next best alternative is to put the fence into the street yard, and yes, it's going in 12 and 1/2 inches from our home into the street yard on the Lindbergh side. Part of that is our driveway, so technically the fence will be about, like, 1 foot, 1.7 in, 1.7 feet, excuse me, to the north side of our driveway. So, you know, we chose a very tasteful design for the fence. We plan on landscaping around the fence, you know, so it doesn't stand out at all.
No.
Not sure what else to say about.
Do any commissioners have any questions for the petitioners? I'll ask one. Why not an invisible fence?
Mainly because we have a small dog, and, you know, there's various times where outside and see a coyote strolling down the street, and an invisible fence is not going to stop a coyote from coming into our backyard and snatching the dogs. So for that main reason, that's why we want to do an actual fence and not an invisible fence.
So commissioners, I can't see you to raise your hands, so just chime in with your questions and comments.
This is a question for Sonia. Why is the, why is it that the northeast corner of the garage is not the defining elements that we're working off of? You mentioned the north side of the house, and then the south edge of the garage, and not clear on that.
Per the code, a street yard, or the required street yard, is defined by the distance from the principal structure to the lot line adjoining a street. And so the garage would not be that factor unless it was an attached garage.
Thank you.
I have a question for Sonia, I think. Not sure if you guys heard me.
Yes.
We're done.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, just to clarify, so in the packet that you submitted, it says that the proposed number five, the proposed fence is a 4-foot aluminum fence, and encroaches approximately 12.5 feet into the required side yard from Lindbergh Road. But in other places, it says this fence is only encroaching about under 2 feet, like 1 foot 7 inches. Am I misinterpreting this or misreading this somehow?
No, the, it is encroaching approximately 12 and 1/2 feet into the required street yard. It is only going about a foot and 1/2 to 2 feet past the driveway towards, towards Lindbergh. So it's only encroaching about that 1 and 1/2 to 2 feet into the north parcel, if you will. So the street yard is defined as where, the line where the house is, but there's that property line, that parcel line between the north parcel and the second parcel, and the southern parcel. So it's only going approximately 1 and 1/2 to 2 feet north of that parcel line that's defined between the two.
Okay. Okay, so for all intensive purposes, for that, it's going less than 2 feet onto the other, under the other property?
Onto that north parcel.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
I think that the driveway is also encroaching, is my understanding, it's just that it's an allowed encroachment.
Correct.
Seeing as you own both properties, I suppose this is a question for Sonia as well. What are the implications of building a fence on a different property if you have to sell one off at one point?
If they were to sell off the other property, they couldn't create any sort of non-conformities, so that fence would need to be removed off of that northern parcel in order for them to be able to do that.
I also have a question for Sonia. Can you confirm that Lot 79, that is a buildable lots? So someone could build a home if they wanted to sell it off?
I believe it technically is, because it does have the 50 feet of frontage along Arlington, so that should technically be a buildable lot.
Okay, it appeared so, so I felt. Moving past questions into comments, in my view, I think the fence is obviously much less of an encroachment, and has much less of an impact on the neighborhood than a home would, so I don't have any issues with this variation request as presented. I think it's pretty clear that the code itself has presented the hardship here.
This is a question for the homeowners. Was there any consideration of simply placing the fence along the edge of the driveway? I know that you mentioned young drivers in the household.
Yes, it was, it was a consideration, and just due to the fact that it's a very narrow entrance and exit there, we were just thinking that trying to avoid future issues with being a driver's getting it, or ourselves, you know, snow blowers, all that kind of stuff, just getting in the way.
I'd like to follow up on that, because this has come up before. Narrow driveways and fences are pretty typical here in Riverside. I forgot what I was going to ask. So it could be built there, right? On the 715 lot, along the property line?
It could, yes.
Well, my, my understanding.
Would that also require?
My understanding is that.
Rich, Mr. and Mrs. Richards, were you saying something?
No. No.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
My understanding, if you can, is that the fence could not be built on the far side of the driveway, it would still be an unallowed encroachment, even if it went right along the edge of the driveway on that side. Is that correct, Sonia?
If we are going to look, if they want us to just look at their lot independently, then we do have to, then they have that possibility, but then that means they cannot utilize in the future that northern parcel for any sort of hardscaping or as part of their property. So either we need to look at it as two independent properties, or we need to look at it as their property in a whole. So if they choose to move forward with putting the fence just on that property line, then we have to kind of say, okay, then that northern parcel is its own separate, independent parcel, and is not part of their property. But then that means they can't be putting any sort of hardscaping or anything on there that's creating, you know, accessory structures on a property that doesn't have a principal structure.
So how does that, how is that choice made? You're saying "we" is the commission could either look at just, I forget the number of the lot where the home sits, or we could choose to look at both lots together as one, what, zoning lot, is that what it's called? Is it for us to do that? Is it?
That was really the Richards' choice of how they wanted to proceed with that, because we gave them the option to approve the permit to just put it on that property line. However, that means that we're looking at just their 715 property, and we're not talking the 711 Arlington property at all. I mean, that's a separate lot, and so doing though has future implications then for what they can utilize that property.
Legally, I have another question. Do you, or does Attorney Mars have any sense of all of the corner lots that exist in the village? How many of those are one lot of record, or whatever it's called, and how many of them are multiple lots? Therefore, how many?
I don't have any information on that.
So therefore, how many of these corner lots wouldn't have this option to either consider themselves as just one of two lots?
I can't really think of any other instance where this, that I've encountered so far with corner lots in my six years here, that I've seen a corner lot like this one. There have been some that have been corner lots, and then maybe have, you know, like 10 feet or 15 feet of a lot that's adjacent to them, because that's just kind of how things got parsed out over time, but I've not seen one like this one, where a lot, you know, a lot was built, and then they purchased what was a corner lot to kind of create one larger lot that way.
Sonia, to your point about treating it as a single zoning lot, even if it's treated as a single zoning lot, petitioners would still have to come forward to us to put anything in that what is now a front yard, right?
Well, there are some things that are allowed in front yards.
Okay.
Walkways, a patio, a driveway, but anything really of substance, like you wouldn't be able to put like a pool or a deck, or anything like that in the street yard. Like, put a flagpole.
Sonia would have.
Go ahead.
Could we give a little bit of the history of how we came to Riverside Purchase, and then purchased the side yard?
Certainly.
Go ahead, Julie.
Okay. The way we understand it, there, before our home was built, there was a ranch-style home that was centered on the two lots. That was sold to a developer who tore the house down, essentially separated the lots. Now, I don't know if back then, they were two separate tax ID numbers, but when we bought it, they were. Built our house, so we bought it, already built, you know, we weren't involved in any of the, you know, splitting of the properties or anything, and he had intended to build another house on the corner lot. And when that lot did not sell, asked us if we would like to purchase the lot, which we did, and just, you know, over the years, we've just planted, landscaped it, put trees in it, you know, made it something very nice-looking versus the empty nothing that it was when we moved in.
So, Mr. and Mrs. Richards, what I was going to ask you earlier, one of the standards that we need to consider is whether there's a practical hardship, or it's practical difficulty or particular hardship, and can you articulate to us, based on the standards, what you think that is in your case? I mean, in your application, you said it's a corner lot. How is that a practical hardship or particular difficulty?
Well, I mean, the difficulty is, you know, not, not having the option of, I don't know, and I'm going to put this into my own words, it's not going to be, you know, according to the code by any means, but just, you know, our hardship is the fact that that is a street yard, which really limits us to what we can do with this fence, as far as putting it right along our driveway. You know, we're just afraid in years to come that, you know, down the line is a foot and 1/2 going to make that big of a difference when we own this side yard, we've landscaped it. When we own this side yard, we've landscaped it. We have no intention of selling it to have a home built on it. You know, just, just the fence, so.
And I'll just reiterate, we already added that, and I'll add it again, that putting the fence right along the property line will cause a driving hazard for the owners. Especially when what we do is we pull in straightforward into our garage and then we back out. And the backing out process is not the easiest. Understand that others deal with it all the time. But that will cause an issue because we come very close to the house. And now we're going to become very close to the fence if it's built right on that property line. So I would also add that as a hardship.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Miller? You need to unmute yourself.
Got it. I have one question for the Richards. Where the fence comes in, and I don't know what direction it is, and comes in and, and joins to the home. It looks like it joins at the, the corner of the house, the rear corner of the house. Would it be possible for you to bring that fence in at some point that is closer to, I don't know, your steps? Or I don't know if those are paved, a paved patio or exactly what that is. Instead of having it meet up at the house corner.
Are you talking that would be moving the whole fence to the south side of the driveway?
No. What I mean is, and again, I'm not sure what the directions are, but so the fence is drawn on our, on the document here in a pink line. It goes from the front corner of the garage. It jogs over into the other lot. It comes straight down. It comes straight down. Yes. And then it jogs back in and connects up with the rear corner of the house.
Right.
So in fact, I mean, what I'm seeing is that the fence and the house don't actually overlap as parallel lines. And I understand the hazard from driving. What if you were to join the fence up a little bit further to the left as shown on the screen here? With either the deck or whatever that is, your porch, and reduce the driving hazard more as far as it being, the fence being kind of close to the house itself. Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't think you get a full enclosure then for the yard for the dog purposes.
Right.
Well, you could then just have the fence jog back around and connect up to some, but that's what I don't know. Couldn't you just have the fence wind around a little bit and then connect up to some high point on the house? Or on your deck or whatever that is in the back? Because at that point, you're on your principal lot and therefore it doesn't matter to the zoning commission.
I mean, I, I believe doing that would, yes, it would. I understand what you're trying to get at by giving the extra space. However, it's, I mean aesthetically to look at that, it's, it would be very awkward to go down the stairs and have that fence joining right there because there would be a post sticking up. And it has to have electrical and other stuff attached with it because the gate is going to be an electric gate. That opens on our driveway, which is best served by connecting to the home.
But it's a possibility. I mean, it sounds like you haven't thought about that, but it is a possibility to do it that way.
And I honestly would have to go out there and look and see if that, how much extra space that would give by doing. It's also going to shorten the distance to get out of the driveway and make a sharp turn coming out. That's going to significantly cut down on the distance for doing that.
Okay, I can, I, that's possible. I can see that I'm, I don't have a very good picture of the backyard. I have just a diagram and sort of, you know, the other pictures, but I just couldn't see what was back there so well.
Other questions? If not, I'm going to go ahead and read the emails that are in our packet. And then the one that was received today, somebody can read that. So this was received May 14th. Hi Sonia, I'm writing in support of application number PZ 20-001. The addition of a fence on the property at 711 and 715 Arlington Road. I live two blocks away at the corner of Lindbergh and Harlem and walk past the home of Shelley and Bart Richards at least twice a day, often more. I am in support of the fence and encourage you to approve their request for a variance. Sincerely Suzanne Mooney. Received May 15th. Good morning Sonia, we hope you're well. My name is Susanna Paretes and we live at 719 Arlington Road. We are neighbors of the Richards family. The Richards are inquiring to install a four foot fence on their property. We are in favor of a fence and feel that the fence would be a nice and strategically placed privacy fence that would allow their puppy Mini the ability to roam freely in their yard. As a dog owner, we can appreciate a fenced yard. Stay safe. Thank you Suzanne Paretes. Received Sunday, May 17th. Dear Ms. Apt, I would like to provide input regarding the following variance application number PZ 20001. I fully in support of this application that was in bold. I've known Bart and Shelley for many, many years. The pride with which they care for the property through meticulous maintenance of and investment in their home and gardens contributes to the overall elegance and beauty of Riverside. A modest four foot high aluminum fence set approximately 40 feet back from the property line to the north, 100 feet from the property line to the east will in no way impact the surrounding neighborhood's aesthetics, sightlines or feel. Rather, it will simply offer the Richards and their two children the same basic convenience that we enjoy. Namely to allow their small pet dog Mini to be outside without risk of getting out, running two blocks east of Harlem, et cetera. If you have any questions regarding this letter, please do not hesitate to contact either Gian or Amy. Finally, thank you for your service and dedication to the village. It is much noted and appreciated. With sincere thanks Gian and Amy Rico, 417 Kent Road. To whom it may concern, this was received Monday, Monday, May 18th. I'm writing in response to application PZ 20-001 with the zoning and planning commission of Riverside, Illinois. As a resident on Arlington Road, I visited Shelley and Bart Richards at 215, I'm sure she meant 715 Arlington, and have seen their plans for a fence. I personally feel it would not inhibit the aesthetics of Riverside or our block and support their application for approval. Thank you for your time, Julie Abina, 735 Arlington Road. Received May 20th. Dear Ms. Apt, after receiving a letter, a visit and a letter from Mr. Richards requesting us to specifically email you to express our support of the building of a fence at 711, 715 Arlington Road, we decided to write you. We live at 451 Kent Road, Kitty Corner to Mr. Richards' house. After much thought and consideration, we cannot support his request for the erection of this permanent structure for the following reasons. One, due to our property being located on the point of Kent, Lindbergh and Arlington Roads, we will have a clear view of this fence. For 25 years, we have enjoyed the advantage of not having the typical backyard view of neighbors' yards and fences, but one of green open spaces. The disadvantages of living on the point is not having privacy or a fence of our own. However, after raising five children in our home, we have vigilantly supervised our small children safely outside over the years, while enjoying the view from all three front yards, front yards in quotes. It seems somewhat unjust that we would only have the disadvantages and not the advantages of living on the point if this fence is approved. Two, newly installed landscaping located directly along Lindbergh Road on the 711 property clearly establishes privacy as a priority. Although 95% of the 711 property remains open space, it is private open space on the homeowner's side of the landscaping. Open space to the neighborhood has actually significantly been reduced. Our concern is that if the fence is approved, this trend for desired privacy will be solidified with a future request to relocate fence which closer to Lindbergh Road. Three, there are clearly other non-invasive options to meet the Richards' needs. We have been friendly neighbors and are also fond of their dog. Mr. Richards explained to us that the fence was needed for their dog in the winter. We have offered to walk their dog for them, or so would love to walk their dog in the winter or summer. We are grateful for the rules established that govern these types of issues in the village of Riverside. We trust this historic landmark quote, which was created by its founders to have green open spaces where form and function follow nature, close quote, will continue to be enjoyed by all members of this community. We therefore respectively request the variance application for 711, 715 Arlington be denied. Respectively, Mr. and Mrs. Brian Berta, 451 Kent. One final one that I have received May 20th. This email is regarding the request for Bart and Shelley Richards to install a fence on said property at 711 and 715 Arlington Road. Mike and I are neighbors of the Richards and reside at 439 Lindbergh Road. We do not have a problem with the fence installation on the property. We back them 100% with the design. Should you need any additional feedback on the issue, please feel free to contact us. Thank you sincerely Nancy and Mike D. Nicola. Director App, you said there was another one that's been received since?
Yes, this evening I received an email from Janet Media. It says, I am Janet Media and my husband Joseph Media, and I reside at 474 Lindbergh Road, a block from the Richards. They shared the fence proposal with us and we strongly support the proposal. We believe it will have no effect on property values and will enhance their property as well as the surrounding area. Please do not hesitate to contact us if you have any questions.
Okay. So no further questions for the Richards? Hey, Mr. and Mr. Richards, do you have any final comments that you want to make? Because once we close the public hearing, you will not have any further opportunities to comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, sorry, before you, before Analyst Bowman, do we have any comments that came in during the meeting?
Not from what I have seen.
Okay, and we still have no, nobody in the waiting room?
We do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. and Mr. Richards, go ahead.
I'll just add, we understand there's a lot of considerations, especially with other homeowners in the village. We are just trying to fence in our backyard. Just please take that into consideration. And we're going to do it in a very tasteful way.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue or close the public hearing? Commissioner Marho? To continue or close?
Close.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Matthews? All in favor? Go ahead and raise your hand, please. All right, thank you. Let's move on to discussion. I think we should have a discussion first before we put forward a motion. Anybody have some initial thoughts that they'd like to share? Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I'm just trying to get back to the screen here. But, okay, there we are. So my initial thoughts is that this is a hard case. This is a very hard case because under the regulations, I don't see that criteria A can be met by the petitioners and because whether they have two lots or a traditional corner lot, what sounds like a traditional corner lot, they're in the same position that many other property owners are in Riverside, where they are not, the regulations simply don't allow for a fence, even a four foot fence to go into the street yard. And my further thought is that this might be a situation where we want to consider changing the code because we're allowing driveways, we're allowing unenclosed porches, we're allowing patios to encroach into a street yard. And I think we could consider in the future, having some kind of a text amendment to review what should be allowed in a street yard for a corner, for a corner lot. Not anywhere in the street, in the street yard, but perhaps within a limited space. Also, I note that even playground equipment can't be allowed. So if you have a corner lot, you can't put really anything of any substance in your street yard. And so it really limits your ability to enjoy your own property.
Commissioner Matthews, sorry.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would actually argue that, I mean, if we're going to look at, you know, I mean, what we have to do is look at the the findings of facts of variation, we have to go through the, the criteria. I, I mean, I, I think arguably that there or letter A, not number A, letter A, number one, the, you know, the presence of an existing use peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that mounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner and that relates to or arises out of the lot thereon rather than the personal situation. I mean, I, I think that criteria is met here. I mean, they, they, you know, they purchased either, there was, there was formerly a house on both lots, the lots were divided. They purchased a house on the other lot. And then they purchased the new, the, the second lot as well. I mean, it's, 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 it's a very strange scenario that they have a, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but say a 50 foot wide side lot. I mean, that's even in Riverside, that's pretty unusual. So I, I think this is fairly unique. I think it is, I think it is really peculiar to this particular subject property. And I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable on, under that scenario saying, you know, this is just such an odd thing and such a unique situation that it actually does fit under A. So I'm, 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 I'm okay with this. I, I don't, at least under A, I don't, I don't really see the, I don't see the issue. Or I'm sorry, I, I see the issue. I don't see this as presenting an insoluble problem and I don't think, and I think they have met the criteria in section A.
Commissioner Marho?
Sorry, trying different ways to make this work. I think John has a very good point. To hold the petitioners to the strict requirements of the setback essentially makes this corner lot unusable. They can do nothing with it other than leave it as grass and trees. I'm sympathetic to the owners that I think it was 451 Kent about their view, their view shed. But I think ultimately we have to recognize that this is private property. And so the petitioners do have the right to make use of it in some fashion. John's point that he is correct, this is a unique situation. I would prefer, I would have preferred it if the petitioners would have pulled the fence back to just four feet off their garage to meet the requirements of the, the gate that near the garage. But I think A is met.
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Pelletier, Commissioner May first, and then maybe we can get a motion on the table and continue to. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Pelletier, Commissioner May first, and then maybe we can get a motion on the table and continue discussion.
So did you want me first there, Jill?
Sure, please, and then Commissioner May. Thanks for raising your hand.
So, I would agree that the hardship has been not met or the difficulty, just from the standpoint of when you have a traditional corner lot, it's a single lot and you place the building in a manner that utilizes that lot, you plan it, you know, to use the entire lot in a sensible manner. In this case, they purchased their house, their house was constructed on this smaller lot, and then the northern lot became available and they're, and they purchased it. So it does, it does present a unique situation that is different from your kind of standard corner lot. And I think that really they're doing it in kind of the most sensible and sensitive manner. The only thing they could do would be to move the fence closer to the driveway to stay on, on their lot. And I do think that by doing that, they're creating a situation that is less desirable because it probably will get hit and will become kind of a maintenance and you know, an eyesore if you can't maintain it every time it gets hit. So I, I think that the the requirements have been met.
Commissioner May?
I agree with the case that John put forward initially here. I don't think we're setting a precedent for other properties to follow. I think this is a very unique condition. And, and they're doing it in a very subtle way. The, the fence has a high degree of openness and it's really barely encroaching into their other property. So I, I see no issue with this. I'm sympathetic to their, their needs.
Commissioner Henigan is back, so happy for that. Let me write down the time. Would anybody like to make a motion? Well, we can still have more discussion before we go through the standards. Go ahead, Commissioner Pelletier.
Thank you. I, um, I move that we recommend approval of the request for zoning variance.
Okay. Commissioner Marho?
Second.
Okay. So I've spent about six hours just today thinking about this, especially the first standard. To me, there's a bit of a contradiction. So if we think about the two pins as one lot, then what they're asking for is to put a fence in the street yard, which they would need a variation for. But if we think about 715 as an interior lot, they could put a fence along the driveway, which of course they don't want to do. But that would be fine. But then one could turn around and say, well, now it's still a fence in a street yard because you can see it from Lindbergh. So I see a contradiction here in, in what they're trying to do and what they could do and how code would be interpreted. So and it's also a unique situation because I agree that there probably aren't a lot of what are locally called corner lots where it's on an interior port part of the lot, as Commissioner Pelletier said. So it's, it's, I think that contradiction creates a practical difficulty. The, the contradiction in how one is interpreting whether if it's on the interior lot, is it a street yard, street yard, or is it a side yard fence, et cetera? Commissioner Henigan, I know you missed about seven minutes of conversation. Do you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, my apologies for, my computer decided to not cooperate. But as I had mentioned previously in the discussion, I do think that the way the code is applied to this particular property is what's creating the hardship since we, there is the possibility of considering these as two separate lots, but practically it's under common ownership, it's being used as a single parcel, and the fence is going to be in the same location, no matter how, no matter what we call it. No matter how you get around it, putting a fence there is going to be visible from Arlington Road. So I do think that's the interpretation we were going with for the variation that's requested makes the most sense to me. And given that, I do think that it there is this practical difficulty created by the fact that the code just doesn't fit this particular situation very well.
Commissioner Miller?
I, I'm happy to have Attorney Mars or Sonia correct me on this, but I wouldn't be surprised that there are a lot of corner lots, which tend to be larger lots in Riverside that actually are more than one lot of record. Some of them are wide, some of them are very narrow, they're less than a buildable lot, but they are different lots. So I think to be clear, if the zoning commission approves this variation, it needs to be very clear as to exactly what conditions have to be met in order to allow this kind of encroachment into a commonly owned piece of property that is made up of multiple lots that also is a, a corner lot, because I think a lot of people walking on Riverside are owning property that is a corner lot is going to wonder why this property is so much different than theirs, and they're not allowed to do what is being allowed here. I think that could get to a perception of unfairness. And I understand Commissioner Pelletier's statement about it's possible that if someone buys one corner lot now and builds a house on it, that they might center it just right, or however they, the builder thinks it should be centered. But years down the line, someone might not agree and might want to go into that street yard, that second street yard. But because they have one single lot of record, they're not allowed to do that. So I just think there could be a perception of unfairness here that the commission should be clear about when we vote on this variation request.
What conditions were you thinking of?
I, I don't have anything particular in mind. Perhaps someone who is going to make a motion to approve the variation request would be able to think of something.
Well, we have a motion in a second.
I mean, I'm, sorry, I'm raising my hand.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm not too concerned about precedent about, on this setting a bad precedent. You know, particularly because, you know, what, what they're talking are, the, the fence is going to be, you know, it's going to be set back from from Arlington Street, or I'm, I'm all confused. I mean, I, I live right there on Lindbergh. But it, but it's only a foot and a half past their driveway. So it's not like they're, they're not fencing, they're not looking to put a fence up next to the sidewalk. And I, and I, and I think that's what, you know, people with side lots would be more inclined to want to do is, you know, put that, you know, fence in that whole lot. They're not looking to do this. They're just looking at fencing in their main property, and the side lot is still going to be open. And I, you know, honestly, I drove by there today and it's, it's already screened in by, by bushes and, and plantings to a degree. So I, I think the fence is going to be essentially invisible. So I, I don't think, I really don't see this becoming by us approving this variation. I don't, I don't think we're setting any type of dangerous precedent or, you know, giving people ammunition to really start, you know, gutting the zoning ordinance because, oh, God, you let these people do it. Why can't we? Again, it just comes to me that this is such a unique situation. It's such an unusual lot, and what they're asking for is so little, it's a foot and a half. You know, they're asking for a foot and a half of their own property to put a fence on. I, I just, I, I just do not see this really becoming a significant problem, in my, in my opinion.
Let's go through the standards. You can all unmute yourselves if you, so you can chime in on the different standards. The first one, A, because of particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of regulations were to be carried out. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or non-conforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to an inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than mere inconvenience to the owner and that relate to or arises out of the lot and/or the structures thereon, rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot, or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot structure. We've discussed this standard at length. I I believe all of us are in agreement that the practical difficulty has been met. Is there any additional discussion on that? Commissioner Miller?
Yes, can I just be clear as to what is the practical difficulty? Is it the fact that they own two lots? And if they didn't own two lots, things might be different.
Attorney Mars, as you've been listening to us, how would you summarize various? How would you summarize our discussion so far? Because it's been parallel, but a little bit different from each commissioner.
Sure. What, you know, maybe a, a lot of the practical difficulty discussion stemmed off of Commissioner Matthews' original comments, and maybe he could reiterate that, but I, I did want to address in terms of like the precedential value. So it's not just, you know, any corner lot that's made up of more than one lot of record that you would look at and say, well, we've got a precedent here. I, I think the commissioner, commissioners have aptly pointed out several factors that we will put in the findings because they're part of the findings that you've made about the distance, the, the length of the side yard and how little this is encroaching into it. And, you know, the unusual circumstances and how they acquired the two properties, the landscaping, all those sorts of things, it make each variation unique. So it's, it's easy to say that we have a precedent problem in a brand-new subdivision where all the lots are the same size, and you're giving one something to, to somebody and, and somebody can bring something almost identical. It's less of a concern in a place like Riverside where there's so many unusual lots and situations, and that's not to say somebody couldn't come to you and, and make an argument, but you're unlikely to find something that is so similar that, that we would feel bound by, by this decision i- if you make the appropriate findings like you're doing in terms of the distinguishing factors here.
And if I might chime in, I think some of the, the unifying factors here that I'm hearing is that it's a combination of the corner lot and how the existing structure was built and placed on the lot that's kind of driving the practical difficulty in where to place a fence in this particular matter. So it's kind of a combination of, yes, it's a corner lot, but it's also how the principal structure was constructed the one parcel.
Okay.
So as to this standard, maybe Commissioner Matthews, could you go back to your original statements of, of, that kind of started the discussion on this particular point?
Oh, gee, that was kind of stream of consciousness, so it's going to be difficult to do. What, you know, what I would say though is that I, I, I think how I would try to phrase it is that due to the unique situation of a existing home on two lots being torn down and the parcel subdivided, and a new structure built on lot number one, and then lot number two being vacant and then sold to the owners of lot number one. It's presented them with a very unusual scenario, which you could define as an exceptional topographical feature, where they have an absolutely enormous side lot. Far, far bigger than, you know, 99% of, I would, I would imagine the folks, people in Riverside. I mean, there's a lot of deep backyard lots, but side lots are really, are really not that big. So I think the standard of a an extraordinarily physical condition inherent in the subject property that's more than a mere inconvenience, and it's arisen out of the nature of the lot itself or the two lots themselves. If that, you know, if I had an hour, I could write this down and make it much more clear, but I think you see where I'm going with this. I hope.
So you would go with one that it rises out of the lot and, and the structures thereon?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. It just, it's, it's, it's both the, you know, because the unusual, I would say that the, the, the large side lot is an exceptional topographical feature. And there's, and there's a condition, you know, inherent in the subject properties, the fact that it was, it was, it was a double lot. It was, it was a lot that was subdivided, so you have that. And it amounts to more than a mere inconvenience because it really, i- it's, it's more than a mere inconvenience, I would argue, when a property owner is prohibited by ordinance from doing what they want with their property within a reason, and what they want to do is put a fence on their property that encroaches a foot and a half. And I, and I would, I would submit that that is a perfectly reasonable thing to want to do with your own property. So I think it's more than a mere inconvenience if they're not allowed to do it. Or if we, sorry. Go ahead.
Commissioner Miller?
Just for the record, it looks to me like these two lots, lot 78 and 79, likely were two lots when the old home existed just because of the numbering, lot 78 and 79. So I just want to be clear about that, that we're not, either we, we know that they were newly subdivided at the time, or else that we don't know one way or the other.
Standard B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain. I think that one's been met. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. Any issues with that one? D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. Any comments on that one?
Well, again, I would just comment that this looks visually like various corner lots, which we don't know if they're multiple zoning lots or not, that's all.
We don't. E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. F, the granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Any thoughts on that? Given the public, okay. G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Comments on that? Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Brenner, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. All right. Chairperson Mateo.
I'm usually last.
Oh, okay. First on the sheet. All right. Commissioner May?
Could you repeat the wording of the variation, the variance that we're voting on, just so I know I'm not going the wrong way here?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the variance request. Aye.
To recommend approval.
Yes.
I recommend approval.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye. I can see you. I don't know what's wrong with my camera.
And that was an aye vote?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Miller?
No, but regretfully, because I think this is a flaw in the zoning code.
And Commissioner Pellet's here?
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
And then Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's six ayes and one nay.
So motion carries, Mr. and Mrs. Richards. We are recommending body, so our recommendation will go to the village board, and then they will make a final decision on that, and that will likely, Director App, any guests?
Meeting in June, at the earliest.
Okay.
So we think- I'll inhale you with the date.
Okay. I just want to say to everybody, thank you for your time in this and patience with all of this, and-
Thank you. So we have another public hearing. If you want to leave our meeting, feel very welcome to do so. Have a good night. All right, let's move on to our second public hearing, right down the time. Let's open public hearing, PZ 20-002. Village of Riverside is proposing text amendments to add a new Chapter 13, Planed Unit Developments of the Zoning Ordinance Title 10. These amendments include the creation of procedures and requirements for planned unit developments to allow flexibility in the application of the standards of the zoning ordinance based upon procedural protections providing for detailed review of individual significant proposals that are in the public interest and provide a public benefit, adding planned unit developments as a special use, as special uses in Sections 10, 4, 5, Use-in-Bulk Requirement Tables, Table 2, Residential District Permitted Uses, and 10, 5, 9, Use-in-Bulk Requirement Tables, Table 4, Business Districts Permitted Uses, and to make such other conforming changes to other sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance as may be necessary. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Before I go on, do we have other guests who have, public to add to the meeting?
Not at this time.
So we still have all of our commissioners, right? Yep. So all the commission members are still present, all in favor for opening the public hearing? Okay. The public notice was published in the landmark on May 6, and we entered it into the record as an exhibit. This one as well, it was not in our agenda packet, but Director App has a copy of it. There we, there you go. So Director App, how about it?
Yes. In 2019, we started this journey. The village staff went to the village board to discuss what other communities have utilized as zoning tools that have experienced some level of redevelopment in their downtowns. And so the village board asked staff to take this to the Planning and Zoning Commission to start discussing the matter and see what would be recommended for Riverside. So we have been talking about this for the past several months. We provided you with some examples of developments from other communities, and Attorney Mars drafted an ordinance kind of as a framework for our discussion. So based on those discussions and your inputs, we came up with a draft text amendment and went back with your recommendation to move forward with planned unit developments to the village board. So that went before them at their first meeting in March. So they were in agreement with your recommendation and asked that we move this forward as a public hearing and an official text amendment. So here we are today. So for those perhaps watching at home, planned unit developments are a zoning tool intended to encourage and allow more creative and flexible development of land that results in better development and design that might otherwise be accomplished under the strict application of the zoning code. They're typically allowed where the development provides for compensating amenities to the village, such as additional open space, aesthetic amenities, which will enhance the character of the site, and facilitating the implementation of adopted village land use policies. The proposed amendment that's before you does add planned unit developments as a special use, designated as a special use for all of the residential districts as well as the business districts. It creates the new Chapter 13, Planned Unit Developments, that creates all the procedures and requirements for planned unit developments that will allow for some flexibility with a development proposal, provided it meets certain standards. There have been references added to planned unit developments in the administration chapter under special uses that adds the reference to this, this Chapter 13 for the additional procedures for planned unit developments. The ordinance does preclude single-family residences from being eligible. That was a specific recommendation of the commission as we were working through this. They are subject to the underlying district regulations unless an exception is specifically granted as part of the planned unit development. And in those cases, they have to be approved by the village board and make findings that certain requirements or qualifications are provided. And that's where that sort of public benefit and amenities comes into play. The code also does list some preferred design characteristics and amenities to provide some guidance to developers or property owners that are looking at this. Pewdies are looked at as a type of special use and are therefore approved by the village board after a public hearing and comprehensive review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So those steps are going to include a pre-application meeting, an optional concept plan meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission or the village board. The petitioners can request that. Then there is the preliminary plan approval. This requires the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, notification to all the surrounding property owners within 250 feet. The commission will make a formal recommendation to the village board, and then the village board can approve, approve with conditions, or deny the special use for planning. After a preliminary approval, they can submit for their final plan approval. They must submit a final plan within one year of the approval of the preliminary plan. The zoning administrator reviews for conformance with the preliminary plan, and if it isn't substantial compliance with the preliminary plan, the zoning administrator will forward to the village board for approval. The ordinance and final plan will then be recorded with the Cook County Recorder of Deeds. There are also requirements, so if there are major changes to the final plan, it will require a public hearing again by the Planning and Zoning Commission and village board approval. The village board may also decide that the request for a major change is so significant that it must be considered a new planned development, and a new application needs to be submitted as such. The final plan will govern all construction and modifications to the property once it is adopted. You have the standards for a text amendment in your staff report. Those are a little bit different than a variation, as you recall, so these don't have to be met, all of them don't have to be met, I should say, in order to make a recommendation. But these are supposed to be provisions that you take into consideration as recommending a text to the zoning ordinance. The ordinance you have before you has all of the new language in it, in the different sections for your discussion and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and Attorney Mars is happy to answer any questions that you might have. I heard a bing. Did we get somebody new into the meeting?
Uh, I think Joe, are you here?
Can you? Yeah, I can hear everything. I was trying to restart the video.
And Attorney Mars, I skipped over the swearing-in. Should we back up? Are we good?
Uh, yeah, go ahead and make it retroactive.
Okay. Who would like to give testimony? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Just so eager to talk about this. And still no one in the waiting room? Does anyone have specific general issues? And that's an oxymoron, but, or do you want to just go page by page? I don't see any hands. So, oh, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Henigan and then Commissioner Miller?
I guess I, I had some questions about the section for the optional concept plan consultation, but if we're going page by page, I can just wait till we get there.
Commissioner Miller?
Right, my question was very specific to the term substantial compliance, and I think it's the zoning administrator that makes that determination. I don't think there's a definition of that in the regulations, and I'm just wondering, perhaps it's a question for Attorney Mars, whether there is a definition in the law as to what substantial compliance is, and if we need to define that in some way. But that's a very specific concern.
Sure. Um, I, that, that may be defined by case law, but I would be hesitant to try to refine that anymore. One of the things I did want to talk about, it has to do with substantial compliance, and that is, you know, you're referring to that in the context of the final plan, right?
Yes, that's right. And my concern is sort of like, not just that the decision is made by the zoning administrator, but what if the applicant doesn't agree with that decision?
Right, right. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about has to do with that. So somebody, I think the chairperson Mateo had, had asked a local developer for some input, and he put in some comments, and, and as I looked at those, a lot of them were just things that clarifications needed to be made, so he understood. But I thought there were three things in particular that were useful that he brought up, and one of those was this. So if you look at, you know, we approve a preliminary plan, and then the developer has a year to create the final plan, submit that to the village, and the zoning administrator, as Commissioner Miller pointed out, then makes a determination, is this in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plan? So the heavy lifting all took place at that preliminary plan step where there was a public hearing and the board approved it, and really this final, final plan step is, is just, hey, we're building on that to kind of refine it and get our building plans and construction documents together, and turning everything in and making sure that it's in conformance with that approved preliminary plan. So the zoning administrator makes that determination, is it in substantial conformance? Then they certify that to the board, and the board, it only talks about the board then approving it. And this individual, the developer pointed out, well, you know, there's not really an option set forth to deny. And I was picturing a situation where maybe the board disagreed with, with the zoning administrator as to whether it was in substantial conformance. So I was going to suggest that we add in here the, the, a, a subparagraph about the ability of the board to disagree and say that they don't find this to be in substantial conformance, at which point, you know, the developer would have the choice to take that matter up to, to a circuit court at that point. But in terms of what substantial compliance means, I mean, you know, we have a pretty detailed final plan with all kinds of things, and, and to try to define what substantial conformance is, I think it's just going to be sort of a common sense determination that, that, you know, the preliminary plan didn't show the driveway here, and now it's here. But there's so many aspects to look at that we're, we're just leaving that to the zoning administrator to determine, hey, we've got something that, that meets the, all the criteria that was looked at by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board at the time they approved the preliminary.
So I think another piece of guidance is, is when you look under changes to approved final plans where it talks about major changes, and you can see the types of things that it talks about in that case. So it's talking about an increase in gross floor area or change in building height, a change in dwelling units, significant changes in the design or, of the development or the design of the building, reduction in open space or changes in required yards. So whatever was determined would be the setbacks as part of the preliminary plan if now it doesn't meet those reductions in parking spaces. Those kind of things it's calling as major changes for, you know, for a final plan. So if they're coming in for a building permit and it looks different than what the final plan is. But I think you can similarly look at those for guidance for differences from preliminary plan approval to final plan approval. Again, if something's coming in with a different dwelling unit count, that's kind of a significant, you know, that's, that's a substantial change. If it's coming in with a different setback, that's a substantial change. I mean, if the setback is, you know, 23.9 feet as opposed to 24 feet, like it said on the plan, you know, maybe that's something I call out, but I don't necessarily see that as something significant. But when you're looking at new building materials, if it's an in-kind kind of material because the one they expect is no longer available or not made, you know, then maybe it's called out that this is an in-kind material, but not necessarily the brand that they said they were going to use. But if all of a sudden we're going to a completely different building material, then yes, that's a significant change and would require kind of almost starting that process all over again.
Right. Landscaping is another example. If they've chosen one kind of tree and it's set forth in a landscape plan that was in the preliminary plans, then they've determined, well, that's, you know, a tree that's not going to thrive at that particular location. They've swapped it out for a different one in the final plan. But we're not significantly decreasing the amount of trees or anything like that, then that, that would be something that you'd say, well, that's still in substantial conformance, even though it's a different kind of tree. Does that help, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I think that does. Yeah, it all sounds good to me. As long as you're both comfortable with the way it's written now, that's totally fine with me. I would, I think, to protect the interests of the developer, what you suggested regarding the, having that appeal, initial appeal, or whatever you want to call it, to the village board, couldn't hurt. Could only make it effective, probably.
Yeah, it's already set up that the zoning administrator certifies it to the village board. The village board has to give a final blessing, but I just wanted to add in there that there is a possibility that the village board could disagree for, for whatever reason with, with the zoning.
Okay, shall we start doing page by page? Anything on page one? At the top, it says draft 050520. Page two. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Miller?
I just want to say I don't have any specific changes on any of the text.
Okay, awesome. So as Attorney Mars said, I did send out the prior draft to a developer on March 3. That was before the village board even gave us the go-ahead to have a public hearing, and certainly before this public notice went out. So that's why these, some comments that we're going to refer to were not included in our packet. So nothing on page two. I like, the table contents is updated. Anything on page three? Four? Five? So Attorney Mars, one of the questions that was raised in the comments that we got back, can there be multiple pre-application consultations? We discussed this last time, that yes, there can be multiple meetings, and that's why in, at the bottom of page five, under A, we have meeting or meetings, meeting or meetings, twice. Is it worth putting in pre-application consultation parentheses, s, close parentheses? Is it worth putting in pre-application consultation parentheses, s, close parentheses? Just to emphasize, it's still all one consultation, so I don't know that it's worth.
I don't think that's necessary. I mean, the idea of the pre-application consultation is just, this is a flexible process. You're trying to get input staff. And I'm sure the PCC are happy to meet with a developer as many times as they're interested in to get feedback on a proposal as it evolves.
Yep, okay. Page six. Number three, Director App and I talked about this earlier today, whether the proposed PUD will be in conformity with the village policies, plans, or studies approved or adopted by the village. One plan would be C map. Have any other plans come up since we talked? Or any other policies that would fit under that one? Page seven?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, for the concept plan consultation, is that intended to be something where a developer would come and present to the Planning and Zoning Commission? And we would ask that person questions? Or would staff present the proposal?
The idea is that somebody would come and present. And, you know, they're telling you, trying to get you excited about the project and tell you what they are looking to do so that they can get direct feedback from the boards that are going to be looking at this as to whether this is going to work for the boards or whether they need to go back to the drawing board. So, it's to their benefit. It doesn't specify that they have to come and present, but it's to their benefit to attend and present those materials for review.
I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that happening outside the public hearing process.
Well, it's almost like a pre-public hearing, you know. So, some planning and zoning commissions will have like a date where a public hearing is set. And the applicant gives them an initial overview of the project. Now, this is going to be a little more involved than that, but you're really just giving an overview and making sure that everybody's comfortable with the ideas that you're presenting. It could be significantly more detailed than that. But I think part of the motivation is to get a sense of how everybody feels about it before you've invested all this money in your consultants and your architectural drawings and everything else. And so, it does give that kind of informal opportunity to get direct feedback and work with the public bodies directly before you get into the public hearing process.
It would still be on our agenda and noticed in the usual way.
Absolutely, yeah. It's not a private meeting, it's a public meeting. And people are welcome to come and comment, make their comments on the proposal, even though it's not a public hearing. Public hearing just takes it to a new level of formality, but public comments are always welcome.
Commissioner Miller?
I was just going to say, it seems similar to what we allowed D96 to do with the Aim School project.
Exactly. Page seven. If you look under C1C, a site location map showing everything within 300 feet of all directions of the development site. We received a comment, is 300 feet too much, I think, was just the comment. I looked at some of the ordinances that were sent to us. Most of them didn't have a distance set. Brookfield uses 100 feet in their climate plan. LaGrange Park, 600 feet, so this is half of it. Director App?
Yes, I'll just interject. If we're looking for maybe something being consistent for rezonings. So, for zoning map changes, we do require them to submit a plan showing properties within 250 feet and any rights of way, alleys, et cetera, within 250 feet of the subject property. So, if we were looking to do something perhaps a little bit more in line with what our code already asks for, we could change it to 250 feet.
Thoughts on that? I've been playing with Google Earth to see how far 300 feet is from various potential sites for PUDs. And like Bank of America, we're crossing Harlem and going to Berwind, couple buildings. And what do you guys think about 250 for consistency? Commissioner Henigan?
I think that's perfectly adequate in terms of seeing what the impact on the surrounding properties is going to be. And I really like it being consistent.
Anybody else?
I saw Commissioner Marhuul raise a hand.
Oh, thank you.
Virtually.
Okay, Commissioner Marhuul?
Let me see if I can unmute him.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, yes.
Good, thank you. I do hate technology sometimes. I think 300 feet is fine. Planned unit development is a bigger deal, bigger experience for the community than just a simple zoning variation. So, 300 feet is only 50 feet over the 250 we already require. This is not a burden on the applicant.
Attorney Mars, any thoughts on this, since you drafted it, because you drafted it?
After seeing the comment and thinking about it, I'm certainly open to, you know, any, 300 feet's fine, but I think something smaller would be appropriate, too. It's completely up to you guys.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Marhuul, this isn't regarding notification. It is regarding them showing all the lots in a site plan and right-of-ways and alleys that are within 250 feet or 300 feet on the plans that they submit.
And that's, I still hold to my previous comment. Thank you.
I'd be curious on your opinion.
Oh, I think Commissioner Pelletier is raising her hand.
Go for it.
I would just say that I don't feel strongly about either. I mean, the difference between 300 and 250 is not really enough to make a significant difference. I don't think so. If we feel that being consistent with other locations in our zoning ordinance is important, then 250 seems appropriate. But I don't feel strongly about either.
Commissioner Miller?
I pretty much agree with Commissioner Pelletier. I mean, I think it doesn't matter that much. I think 300 feet is fine. On the other hand, if the community was really considering a planned unit development, I think everyone would have a sense of the location in which that planned unit development is being located and sort of what's in the general area. And, you know, I mean, I think this provision is sort of to get a sense of zoning, the type of, you know, land use in that area. And for us, I think PCC and the village board would all have a good sense of that. So, I'm indifferent.
Commissioner Matthews?
I don't have any strong feelings about it one way or another. I mean, consistency is good for, you know, for drafting ordinances. But this is a, it's a different type of, different type of beast we're talking about here. I mean, I don't think we should get too long up and talking about this, though. I mean, I'm happy to accept that it's already been drafted.
Commissioner May?
Same, difference between 250 and 300 feet, pretty negligible. I'm fine with leaving it as is.
I kind of agree that this is a significant move for our village, if any of these come up. So, 300 probably be a better way to go, in my opinion. So, anybody want to speak strongly for 250? Okay. On page eight, there were several questions about what, how do you define a qualified professional? I'll let Attorney Mars address this, because he did such a good job addressing this earlier today.
Right, so the comments have expressed concern about, or question, qualified professional in the context of who needs to prepare the traffic circulation plan and impact analysis? Who needs to prepare the drainage plan? Who needs to prepare the landscape plan and the utility study? And some of the comments have been directed to the fact that, well, could the architect do that? And it kind of goes to the substantial change that we talked about earlier. It's a similar idea. I don't think we want to try to exactly define who a qualified professional is to prepare its traffic circulation plan and impact analysis, but it would not be the architect. You know, it's common in developments to get a traffic study done by the group of companies that perform those for developments. And, you know, they're pretty well-known in those circles. And so, you would get a traffic circulation plan created by them. And those come with the qualifications of the people who prepared it. And we would make that determination that that person is a qualified professional. Same goes for those other things. A drainage plan should not be prepared by the architect. It should be prepared by an engineer. Same for the utility study and, you know, a landscape plan. Landscape architects or other people would be the appropriate person to prepare that. So, I don't think we need to make changes necessarily, but I just wanted to talk about that and have everybody understand that. You know, this is pretty common terminology. And staff is perfectly capable of determining whether somebody is a qualified professional to prepare the different aspects of the plan as required by the ordinance.
Thank you. So, on that page at the very bottom, if the applicant is given recommended changes, they may, within 30 days, submit a revised preliminary plan. So that, we received a comment that that might not be enough time to revise the plan. And I'm thinking, well, it might not be enough time for PCC to get it on the schedule and have another public hearing. So, what do you think about 60 days for that? And is that enough?
I do, and there's an option to have that extended as well, built into the ordinance already. So, but 30 may not always be practical. So, if you want to say 60, that's fine by me.
Any thoughts on that? Sounds okay. Commissioner Matthews is okay? I think if I were developer. Sorry. You had a comment?
Commissioner Matthews just said it was fine with him.
Okay, I just, 30 just seemed awfully restrictive, even if we can do extensions. Anything else on that page? Okay, moving on to page nine. I had a question about D3, DII. If the application is not acted upon by the village board within 60 days, the application is deemed to have been denied. This is fairly common language in the other ordinances that we read, but it's not part of special use, it's not part of variation. So, Attorney Mars, I just wondered if you could speak to, is this normal? And, you know, why is that there? I'm fine, apparently it's in all the other PUDs, but any sense for why that's there?
Right, the comment that you're referring to pointed out that if the board gets a recommendation on a preliminary plan and denies it, they're required by the ordinance to give their reasons in writing why they're denying it. In the alternative, if they haven't acted on it in 60 days, the draft provides that it's just deemed denied, that it dies without official action on their part. And the comment was, well, you know, after investing all this money and the professionals and everything else, to just let it die without giving us any reasons doesn't seem fair. And as you point out, it is common in these ordinances. And I think the point most likely, to my understanding, is to keep things moving along, that we want to impose these deadlines. But at the same time, you know, for the benefit of developers who have invested substantial amounts of money to get to this point, you can also argue that they deserve a action by the board and a written denial, that they can appeal to a circuit court if they disagree with it for some reason. And so, I would be okay if everyone wanted to, to take out the deemed denied language and just say that the board will, you know, make all efforts to reach a decision in 60 days. And whatever their decision is, if they deny it, whether it's in the 60 days or after, they're going to give their written reasons why they deny it so that the developer does have something to work with in terms of a circuit court action, should they want to pursue that.
Thoughts on that? It's just at odds with our practice for special uses and variations that the village board shall act or will act, or whatever language is, within 60 days.
I agree with that. I think it is a kind of a disservice to the developers to just leave them hanging for 60 days and then have no indication of why that might be. So, I think it makes sense to require that a decision is made or issued.
Commissioner Miller?
I'm all for giving the developer, the proposing party, an opportunity to exercise their legal rights. So, I think I had asked this question a couple of months ago, and Attorney Mars made a similar explanation, which made sense to me. But it's fine with me if we don't say denied, but they have some kind of an actionable right if there is no action within 60 days. My second question is just, what if it was on the agenda and something like a pandemic occurs and all of a sudden, you know, the board can't act? Is there like a understood, recognized legal consequence of that? Where it's totally, they're totally unable to meet that 60-day guideline or requirement?
Well, in a lot of cases, you guys weren't in the middle of any kind of zoning actions in the same way some other places were. But in several communities, you know, local emergencies were declared. And one of the things that the mayor or village president would do in those cases would be to suspend these kind of deadlines due to the pandemic. And everybody understands that. And courts likewise understand that, you know, municipalities are doing the best they can under the circumstances.
Okay, then short of a pandemic, these issues can be continued to have date certain, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and I think clearly, I mean, there could be discussion between the zoning administrator and the village board and the applicant and say, hey, we haven't gotten to it within 60 days, but we're going to, right? And don't go and sue us right away, just hold on.
Other thoughts? Anything on page 10? 11? Attorney Mars, you had mentioned the possibility of a. Attorney Morris, you had mentioned the possibility of a denial option.
Right, so that would be for action on the final plan. So that would be addressed under 3C on, on page 11, either adding a new D, denial option, or, or making C just general action by the village board, where we describe, you know, they're either approving it or, or disagreeing with the certification that it's in substantial conformity and, and denying it.
I guess from a staff perspective, I'll ask you, Attorney Morris, if I look at something and I say that it doesn't conform to the plan, and they want to argue the point with me, do I then take it to the village board? And my recommendation is that it does not comply with the preliminary plan and then the board decides approval or denial?
Right, so that's addressed under B. If you find it substantially changed or otherwise not in accordance with village regulations, then you recommend to the village board it be denied. And you'll notify the applicant of the areas found not to be in compliance, and they can resubmit the final plan to the zoning administrator with changes. So I guess it's already implied that the village board could deny. But that would be on your recommendation that, that it was not in substantial conformity. So we want to add the option that they could just disagree with you for some reason. Now, in reality, if you, as zoning administrator, certified that something was in substantial compliance with the preliminary plan and the board, for, for some reason disagreed, you know, the developer may have a persuasive case that they're being denied for political reasons or whatever else, but, but that would be something for the circuit court to deal with.
And for me to say, well, Your Honor. So that would be added as a D under three?
Yeah, I'd either rework C for village board, as a village board action in general, or I would add a new D, denial.
That seems a little lengthy, of a little paragraph there for approve or deny.
Yep, okay.
Any comments on that? Okay, page 12. 13. 14. Take a long look at 15. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion? Do we have to vote on this? Yes, this is a public...
Yes, you do.
Yes.
So it'd be a motion to recommend with, with the changes that we've discussed tonight.
I try. Go through the standards and then get a motion on the table, or the opposite? What do you recommend?
Make the motion.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Looks like Teresa. That we recommend approval of the text amendment?
With the revisions discussed?
With, absolutely, with the revisions discussed.
Is there a second? Commissioner Miller? All right, again, not all the standards need to be found to be met. First one is A, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village. Thoughts on that? Ideally, it's for the welfare of the village. B, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant. Doesn't really apply in this case. The consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans. I would argue it's in accordance with the CMAP plan for the CBD.
Agreed.
D, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance. E, whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, or reflects a change in policy. Reflects a change in policy because the village board is looking for this. F, that the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors of any property under consideration, or other special interest groups, and the extent to which the proposed use would be in the public interest and would not serve solely the interest of the applicant. Well, it's the village and it's village-wide. Whether the proposed amendment provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance in the village plans. Kind of wish we had this for Ames, that would have been a lot easier. H, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformities. That's a definition, not. Except to which the proposed, the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the zoning ordinance.
We tried.
Any further discussion? Okay. Analyst Bowman, will you call the role? Please?
All right, so this is the, this is the motion to recommend approval with revisions discussed. So Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Put me on your end here?
Yeah. Commissioner...
Aye.
Aye, great. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
And then Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
Okay. All ayes.
Motion carries. So that was a lot of work over a fair amount of time, so thank you, everyone, for that. Also goes back to the village board at some point. We have no old business, we have no new business. Do we have any information? Director App, any progress on the RTA?
Actually, yes. So they, they had put out the call for bidders, I guess, solicited consultants, and it was right around Christmas time, and nobody bid on the project. So they re-put out the call for proposals, and they did get seven respondents. So they are hoping to have this on their, I think he said, June meeting. So hopefully we'll hear something by the end of June on who they've selected to be the consultant for the project. And then we'll, we'll start moving forward from there as they finalize the, the contract with them.
That's great news. So our next scheduled meeting is June 24th. As Director App said earlier, there's currently nothing on the agenda, but that doesn't mean that won't change.
Correct.
Anything else? Well, thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Stay home, stay, wash your hands.